Let's call this meeting to order. And we actually have a couple of people here tonight, which is great. Bob, thank you for coming, um, as a representative position of zoning administrator. Ray, you're still the assistant zoning administrator, alternate, right? All right. Rich, Karen, Jeffrey. Any changes to the agenda? We actually have not an insignificant agenda tonight. We have, I want to talk a little bit about some grant opportunities that I learned a little bit more from Mark about. Bob wanted to talk about the Peter Campbell subdivision. And we're going to continue talking about the town highway ordinance and getting feedback on that. Anything else? Okey dokey.
You ready to present Zoom?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Does that mean no one's on there or we're not letting them in yet?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so let's carry on. Item three is approval of the minutes from the August 4th meeting.
I move to approve them. I don't have any changes.
A second.
I don't have any issues. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, those are approved, thank you. Reports, mail and email. You didn't look at it, right? I did look a little bit. I felt like half of them were from me to the rest of the planning commission. That I will talk about under Mark. There was an approval on the blasting, right? There was an Act 250 approval on the blasting. I think that got approved. The Reading Heights subdivision, which we're going to talk about today. We got some feedback from the chair of the West Windsor Conservation Commission and the town representative to the AO who would be happy to come talk about Class 4 roads. We also got a reply from Vermont Overland, who would be happy to weigh in on the Class 4 roads, notwithstanding the fact that they're expecting their second baby any second. We've got a few zoning permits. One for, like, sort of in addition to a barn, like a shed, a run-in on the Coletti-Kellerman property and another run-in on the Goodroom property. And... Wrist Hill, was that the blasting?
I think so.
Yes.
There was something about the Agency of Natural Resources doesn't have any concerns for wildlife disturbance on the blasting. And I think that's it. So that's all the email. And I don't think we get any mail in the mailbox. Regional Planning Commission, I did check in with Kathy Rondo, who is our representative to the Mathis-Cutney Regional Commission, which we call Mark. And she suggested reaching out to Aaron Ladd and making sure that Aaron Ladd of Mark knows that we are interested parties for the purpose of getting updated on Act 181, which is the legislature's attempt to kind of categorize which towns and areas might be ripe for future development. So I think, I think that 181 is trying to look at communities and figure out where appropriate places might be to develop this, that, or the other. I think we're in the very early days. There is a summary on the Mark website, which I took a look at, which is a little complicated. It seems like Mark and other regional commissions are going to be responsible for their areas. And it sounds like it's going to be a whole big process that they will be working with communities, including the Select Board, to categorize where development might occur. So stay tuned. It's going to be an interesting process. Kathy also said, for the Class 4 roads, she hopes that they never go private again. So that's one more person's opinions on the Class 4. That is not an issue, by the way. No one's talking about making Class 4 roads private. The Energy Board, nothing new. I think there was a nice update from Brian Kelly the other day in the Front Porch Forum that talked about how much energy had been made by the solar panels, which is pretty cool. Bob, do you have any reports as a zoning administrator or do you want to wait until the...
You gave them all.
Okay, sorry. I spelled your thunder. You should have said stop.
I was just going to mention the four permits that we signed in August. One was on a 38 by 48 foot garage. I just got an email today on that. And now they want to turn it 90 degrees. However, the footprint doesn't change. It's just the way they get into it, through the doors. Foundation doesn't change. It's going to fit. And the firewood for John Morgan, run-in shed for Garfield and Lucy Goodroom. And a lead do for Kellman and Copey. That was basically it for August, other than the one we're going to talk about later. It came in in August, but there's been no action on our part, other than several telephone conversations with Peter regarding what he wants to do and what we're doing. Or, you know, I told him that would be after tonight. I could probably move it forward pretty quickly.
Okay, so let's hold on to that one. What about the, what about the house site on Bailey's Mills Road? Is there a permit? Has a permit issued for that?
Where they tore the old house down?
Exactly.
Yeah, the, yes, there is a permit, but it's probably almost ready to run out. I'm sure they'll be asking for an extension. They're going to build up in the field. If you see, there's a driveway going in now up around the hedge row and up. Their house is going to be up much higher than where the old house was.
Probably a good idea based on the last plot.
Well, I can, I got to tell you, that's not exactly a dry field. So they may run into some issues that, I hope they don't, but may run into some issues they're not planning on with that.
Okay. Okay. Jane, anything for ZBA?
No.
Great, so let's get to item number five. I have 20 minutes on this. I don't know if we need that much time. It's a review of municipal planning grant opportunities. So, Select Board received an email from, was it Mark? Saying that there's some grant opportunities available.
I think that come directly to me from the state, but I'm not sure. I don't remember now.
Okay. I did not get it directly, but I then called up, oh yeah, it was from Jennifer LaBoix from vermont.gov. I called up Jason, who is, Jason Ratnissen, who is in charge of Mark, just to ask him more questions about it. And he said there might be an opportunity if we wanted to do a particular project, like update the town plan. It's a little early for that. We don't need to do that. Or, he said, look at our zoning subdivision laws. We've already done that, so good on us. Look at other possible projects. I mentioned to him this effort we're undertaking on the Class 4 roads, and he was kind of interested in that. And said that's something that Mark could help us with if we wanted, to kind of think of best practices and even help with an inventory of the roads, to kind of come up with some kind of resource that would let people know which roads are public and which are available for use, as opposed to kind of having it just be word of mouth or a map in the town clerk's office. So that's something to think about. I don't know if we want to follow that up. And I said, I don't know that any of us has the bandwidth to write a grant, and they said they could even help with us.
We should take advantage of it, I think.
What do we think?
What would our focus be?
I think the focus would be to advise us on best practices for town highway ordinances, so they could look at other resources available, kind of like Martha did with us with the zoning updates. And possibly help with coming up with some kind of a deliverable that could serve as a resource for people wanting to use the Class 4 roads. So rather than have it be, you know, if you're in the know, you know where they are, have it be something that could be an asset of the town and be more known what they are and where they are.
Have we seen the maps that John Fike was mentioning?
I did get this.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay. How detailed are they? I haven't seen them.
They are, I should have brought them. I just got them fairly recently. I think they came to the town and actually asked her to deliver them to my house one day. They seem to be more about the parcels. So it's, it's a parcel map of Reading. Which is kind of cool because you can see where all the property lines are and how big all the parcels are. It's, there is a map, I don't know if it's on the wall.
That's just the building.
There is a map that is online that shows Class 4 roads and private roads, but it's not, I don't know that it's super accessible and it's not always intuitive to read and see which is a genuine Class 4 road versus a private trail.
Do you allow interjection here?
Of course.
We have, this Select Board has a grant through Mark to do another road inventory in between now and 2027. Basically, that road inventory looks at all the roads in town. And I think it only goes, I'll be careful, it may go Class 4, but I know it goes through Class 1, 2, and 3. And it looks for all the runoff criteria that's supposed to be worked on, and we are working on it. 20 Mile Stream is a perfect example. Jenny Road is an example.
Townhill Road's a good example. Townhill Road's a good example.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come, meet with you. But basically, what they do is define whether or not it meets the road standards or not, or partially meets, and it's divided up into 330-foot segments all over town. And that is a lot of segments. Plus, every culvert is looked at and qualified as good or excellent, good, needs cleaning, needs replacement, et cetera. It's a big, big job. We did it back in 2015 or 16, maybe? Somewhere back there, a long time ago. And so it's due again, and they will be working on that with us. And they supply most of the manpower to do the inspection.
So can you find out if it includes the Class 4 roads? If it, if it does, I don't, we don't need to be redundant, but if it doesn't, it might be an opportunity to put in a different grant to get that piece mapped as well?
I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll find out and let you know.
So maybe let's wait to hear back from the Select Board about whether or not the inventory...
I think I can write out tomorrow or soon as I can get ahold of somebody at Mark.
Okay. Any other things that we would be interested in looking for a grant for, for consulting on, anything we're working on? I don't know that we need to make busy work or spend money that doesn't need to be?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm along those thoughts too.
And any, any grants that we receive? Jason said typically Mark would require the town to put up a piece of it, like we did with the last one as well.
Right.
So it's not like it's totally free. All right, let's wait to hear back from the Select Board. Bob, whether or not it includes the Class 4s. If it doesn't, I think we should explore whether or not that's something that we wanted to, because that might be a nice companion piece to that. And in terms of preserving, protecting, promoting this really cool asset for the constituencies and the stakeholders, it could be a helpful tool.
And this would be specifically for mapping?
Mapping and policy.
Policy?
Yeah.
Because then our policy through this discussion is to, to recommend to the Select Board for them to make a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, or not, right? I don't think we've heard enough feedback yet to know.
The mapping, I don't, I mean, it can't hurt to map the roads.
Mapping could be great.
The town, the town roads are pretty well mapped, if you can get all the right ones, as well as the trails. There are a lot of them that have been discontinued over the years. Once in a while, you'll find a map that they still show on there. And then there's been occasion when I called the state and said, hey, what happened to this road? And, oh, that was dropped inadvertently. So every spring, when I hit those maps, I look at it pretty close. But the ones that were on there, and I could give you a copy of it, the ones that were on there are pretty accurate as far as right away is owned by the town. I'll put it down there.
Is, is that something that you could send us a link to? Kind of where you consider the most accurate Class 4 map?
Maybe, but I get them in hard copy, so I'll find out from, I've got a meeting with AOT on Friday, and I will find out from Chris Buck at that time if it is available electronic. It's a huge map. It's a big example behind you.
Okay. Do we have one in the town clerk's office here? So if I went to the town clerk and said, can you show me the latest, greatest map, would she know?
I hope so.
Because I don't think Parcel Viewer has all the trails and roads mapped. I think that's mostly just...
It should have them, Stacy. It should have them.
I haven't drilled into specifically the roads, but I know it does a good job at the parcels, noting changes and whatnot. They're getting more and more up to date.
A&amp;R has a good map online. Agency of Natural Resources has a good map online. And that is pretty hard.
Can you send me a link of that?
A&amp;R.
Yeah, of, of that map that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
You can Google it too. Vermont Parcel Viewer and A&amp;R, and it'll pull them up pretty quick.
I mean, I've seen the Parcel Viewer before, but some, you know, sometimes you look at a map and it's still got the old Jeep trail along Kittredge pasture that hasn't been in existence forever. Or roads that are wiped out. It'd be really interesting to see just the ones that are still active and functioning.
They, they don't show, I don't think they show very many, if any, private trails, like through the property up on Tapistock and Jimmie and those places like that. I don't think they show those trails. That would show us one big parcel with not, with no interruptions.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Great. Anything further on that? All right, moving on. Item six, review of the Peter Campbell subdivision issues. And I'm not quite sure what the issues are, so maybe you can brief us.
Actually, the initial issue was he was trying to divide, divide that lot up there into 14, 13 or 14 separate lots. Five acres for a whole bunch along 106 and Hagan Hill. And then one bigger one up on top. I know the topography up there pretty well, and the reason for the bigger one is there's a lot of ledge up in there and it'd be pretty hard to subdivide any portion of that into smaller lots. I went back to Act 250 and they were not aware that we had changed the zoning rights to 25 acres. Peter Campbell wasn't aware that we had changed them to 25 acres. So he was dealing with Act 250. So I said, well, if you have any correspondence, would you please tell it? The next thing I know, I got this parcel map back again with 14 lots on it. So I called him and I said, Peter, that is 25 acre zoning. That means each lot has to be at least 25 acres. And he said, oh, he said, I guess I'm looking at old zoning rights. I said, well, you must be, we changed it in 2022. So he said, all right, let me look into it. And it went on for a little bit, and he came back with the one that I sent to you folks. One lot subdivision of 31 acres right in the corner of 106 and Hagan Hill. Leaving the other 134 acres as one large parcel. Doesn't mean he couldn't try to subdivide that again, but that's not his intent with his current permits. His current, current application is still on. So he just wants to subdivide the huge lot into a 31-acre lot right into the corner of 106 and Hagan Hill, which is basically pulling in four or five of those five acre lots plus some of the parcel that was maintained as a large lot on the original application. And he's got, it's pretty, it's almost a square lot. If you liked it, I hope I sent you this, the little site by the way you sent.
I don't recall sending a site by...
I don't remember sending a site by... Well, my apologies, Sam.
Doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I don't, I don't remember. I don't think it happened. Okay.
So the reason that I sent it to you, Eve, was that the zoning rights just, what was the last year before? Was changed to allow the zoning administrator to sign off on a single plot subdivision or boundary line adjustment. And being that this is the first subdivision, I just thought, of a single lot, I just thought that it'd be well if, we talked about it and made sure that you folks are comfortable with my savings on those types of subdivision problems.
Except according to the, it's in the wildlife habitat overlay.
So this is just north of 44?
Wildlife corridor and wildlife habitat.
So here's 44.
I don't know what...
So this is heading north?
You know, it's the state before, he could subdivide it, Jane, but then before he built the state, that's when he...
Okay.
Wildlife corridor, wildlife or on the line.
The north side.
If it was in a different spot, flood plain regulations might...
So is he aware that it's that in, in the wildlife corridor? And that he may have to take other steps?
He has to be, because he's been working with Act 250 and that would be one of the things they would...
So it... It is in the wildlife?
Yeah, and he may be also in the ridge line over here.
The lot, the large lot itself is in the wildlife overlay. But whether this corner falls into it or not, I don't know the answer to that. I didn't check that.
Can I see that?
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, maybe the top part of this parcel could be in the ridge line overlay, but I don't...
Right.
And that shouldn't, honestly, it shouldn't matter with subdividing. It just, there's different criteria with the ridge line overlay.
Subdividing, planning to build that he should know that what he's looking at.
Oh, he should know everything about it. He should have known that it was a 25 acre.
Yeah.
That's pretty low level, so I'm sure the ridge line hasn't come into effect at all.
So here's 44. Here's 44. He wants to do it up in here, right?
He's right by flat iron, no. See, flat iron out there.
So that's...
It's right in the corner of Hagan Hill and 106. And if you have been up 106 and seen the new driveway, driveway where they logged it out, it's right in that corner there.
So that's the wildlife travel corridor and the deer wintering area. All right, so...
So why would those two criterias have anything to do with the subdivision?
Not subdivision, but if he wants to build, so he just should be aware.
So I need to take a step back, hold on.
Yeah, whoever bought that lot would then have to review both of those through, through Act 250 to say, okay, this is the part I want to build. Are you okay with that?
So that parcel, that entire parcel, is an Act 250 parcel? Okay.
So here's my question.
So that's why you went to Act 250. So yeah, he would have to get, any sort of development would have to go through Act 250.
But we're talking about the subdivision, right?
We're just talking about the subdivision.
So under the state's proposed changes, which Reading adopted to hopefully streamline subdivisions so that not every single one needs to go before the Planning Commission, you are correct. The ZA is authorized to review and approve applications for lot line adjustments, that's between two different neighbors, and minor subdivisions that meet all applicable standards. You can always ask to go to the Planning Commission if you think that there's different review. But then for review standards, the ZA can grant a permit for minor subdivisions, provided the proposed subdivision satisfied all the following standards. And there's a bunch that have to do with dimensions, setbacks. If something is subdivided by the ZA as a minor subdivision, it can't be subdivided again for at least five years. Something to keep in mind.
Well, that one couldn't be subdivided in any way because it's, it's 31 acres, so you can't subdivide it.
But then the, the last two portions of it are number letter F. No portion of the lot is in the river corridor or hazard, flood hazard area. It's not, no portion of the lot, a parcel proposed for subdivision is located in the significant wildlife habitat overlay district. An application for a subdivision located or partially located in that thing, the Suahad, shall be referred to the Planning Commission for review as a major subdivision. So if this is in the significant wildlife habitat overlay district, I think it requires full Planning Commission review.
We'll have to get a better layout than what he's furnished, what the initial request. It does not show any of that. It just shows the big lot and the little lot he wants to create.
Yeah. And so these, so there's this one map that we're just seeing now for the first time, or if you did send it to me before, I apologize, I don't remember seeing it. But then looking at the significant wildlife habitat overlay district just rolls off the tongue. From that little map, it looks like it's in, it is squarely in that district in both the wildlife travel corridor and the deer wintering area. So I'm not looking to make anything harder, but I also don't want to...
I'll have to take a look at that. I didn't think it fell in the quarter anyway, but it may.
We'll make sure we have the right map. And it would be nice to look at a bigger one and maybe see this overlay on it somehow. So I think we need more information. Does that make sense? It would be good too to know a little bit about what he's thinking. I mean...
He's thinking he wants to sell a lot. I think that's what he's thinking.
Okey dokey.
I don't, I don't know that he has any...
Good luck.
I don't know that he has any major overall thoughts for go-forward plan. This was pretty quick after I told him he couldn't do the 14 five acre lots.
Do you know when he bought this property? Was it before the 2022? That was before my...
I got infor, I got information on Reading Heights back before 2010.
So he's owned this for a long time?
He's owned it for at least 15 years and maybe closer to 20. Or, let me rephrase that. There was a group of them that owned it originally, and now it's down to two. So I don't know if the others have just gone away, sold out, passed on. I don't know the status of the other people, but there was quite a group of them at one time, five or six.
Okay. So my first impression, y'all should let me know what you think, is that it looks to me like it's in the wildlife area and we should confirm that, but if it is, it has to go to the full Planning Commission for subdivision. If for some reason it's not, and it can be done under the more streamlined process with just the ZA, make sure he is aware that that remaining large parcel cannot then be again minor subdivided for a minimum of five years. So you can't do a minimum subdivision and then come back next year and do another minimum subdivision and then come back next year and do another one. I think there's a five-year limit.
Yeah, you just said that, but I was reading that to mean the lot that got subdivided off couldn't be resubdivided. Am I wrong?
Is that what he's doing? He's just subdividing a piece off?
Yes.
He's not subdividing it into two properties?
Well, it will be two parcels.
It would be two parcels.
Once he subdivides...
Yeah, just for subsequent ones. Just so he knows that it's not something you can kind of do serially instead of as an end run around full review. That's all.
Well, my, yeah, okay, but my point was, I was thinking that the second subdivision... Well, my, yeah, okay, but my point was I was thinking that the second subdivision, the lot that got subdivided off couldn't be subdivided again for five years. You're talking the lot that's remaining.
Mm-hmm.
Cannot be subdivided for five years.
I mean, I think.
For a minor, minor subdivision.
As a, as a minor subdivision.
I think it ties up, it ties up both new parcels for five years for minor.
To four.
I'll go back and.
It doesn't mean they can't come back in a year and do, do a full review for another subdivision.
It's just taking advantage of that minor subdivision, um, lesser process.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll read that again.
Yeah, and I think it is both parcels. So that one is bigger or one is smaller, I don't think it matters. It's just, it's two parcels. So either one is gonna be subbed out.
Will be two parcels after the subdivision.
This was a great test of the new, the new language.
Well, that, and that's kind of why.
It's very exciting.
I wanted to serve it up to you folks.
Yeah.
And just like.
And it's kind of like your words.
Serial. Serial subdivisions.
Subdivisions.
Serial miners, some miners. No, this is exciting. This is like the new zoning ordinance in action. Um, this is kind of fun. Um, okay, great. Anything more on that?
No, I guess we'll all march to the end and I'll get back.
If, if this map is correct, then it definitely falls in both quarters.
Okay.
Yeah, if it, yeah, and I mean, full, the whole parcel does. It's not even part of the parcel, it's the whole parcel.
And it's not just one corridor, it's both. So I don't know what that means. There's a whole process in here that I don't know off the top of my head, but if that is true, then we would have to go down the significant wildlife habitat overlay district procedures. There is a way to subdivide in there, um, but we'll have to all analyze that together.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
I don't think that map you got in your hand, Stacy's been changed for a while, a while. So I would say that it's current.
Adopted July eighth, adopted July eighth, two thousand and nineteen, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Well, you folks didn't make any changes in twenty-five.
No.
Nope.
No, nothing.
That answers that then.
Okey doke.
And again, I don't think.
Unless they made a change in twenty-two when they went to twenty-five acres, but.
That brings up a really good point and, and it's something that's concerned me for a very long time, decades actually, is when the town changes these districting and these lot size requirements, we should have some sort of a mechanism where we're on record notifying the landowners that their parcel has been designated a twenty-five acre versus a ten acre because somebody's owned a parcel for a very long time. And then all of a sudden, a group comes along, planning commission, and changes the acreage minimums. It could impact their future use and value of the property. And in this case, it's a perfect, perfect example. And there was, um, the lady, oh, I forget her name. She was attending meetings for quite a while. She's a family that's been here forever. Um, she has a parcel. I think it's just over here somewhere. And she said that her zoning minimums, her parcel was changed into three different zoning.
Yeah.
One to a five acre, one to a ten acre, and one to a twenty-five acre, all on her one parcel.
I can attest to that.
I wish I.
I can attest to that.
Yeah.
Mine is.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't think it's fair that it can just be changed without, and I know there's a public process where people should get involved in, in that process, but there should be something on record that says your parcel will be changed this coming year.
I think they were all notified, but I have to ask deep straight that to be absolutely sure.
I know ours, we have a parcel that it was changed, not the acreage, it was the ridge line overlay, and we were not notified. And when I brought it up, it was kicked back to saying you should be at the meetings. Shortly thereafter, I started going to the meetings.
And here you are today.
It was a method, it was magic.
I think your point is well taken. Practically, I think it would be difficult. And we have fallen on the short end of this in a couple of different ways too, where all of a sudden you have a feature of your property that in one town plan is perfectly A okay and then in another town plan is not A okay. And it's like, what, what just happened? You know, when did that slide through?
Right.
Um, I think it would be hard to take that on. So one of the examples is in the most recent zoning bylaw overhaul that we did, that the select board adopted last January, that we had the, uh, Mark Grant for, that Martha, what's her name? I've already forgotten.
Harrison.
Harrison, um, was assisting on. The state had wanted properties, as you may recall, that had a road running through them to be automatically subdivided.
Right.
So that would have affected.
A lot of parcels.
How many properties in town?
Lots.
Yours?
Everybody.
All stunned chimney. It would have affected so many properties. Um, not necessarily positively. It might have been a windfall for some people. It would have created a whole bunch of non-conforming lots. And ch- chances are their taxes would have gone up because all of a sudden they're sitting on two lots instead of one.
Absolutely.
So if we had just willy-nilly adopted that and recommended it to the select board, the select board had accepted it, that would have been a huge change and there's no mechanism to let everybody know. I mean, I think the reality is you just have to.
Well, they would have known.
When they got their tax.
With new parcels.
I think, I think you, I think you're, you are right, and I think it is probably also unlikely to ever happen that everyone affected will get personal notification. Just, just a guess. But yeah, it's, it's tricky.
I have a question going back to this particular map. You said it was adopted in two thousand and nineteen. That wasn't necessarily by the town, right? That was when it was created by the Department of Natural Resources or something. Did that affect, right?
Well, this is significant wildlife habitat overlay district town of Reading, Vermont adopted. So I, I don't know the process when, when that happened, if the state recommended it and then.
What does it say down there?
Southern Windsor County Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, so they, so they developed a map and then Reading just decides to adopt it. So a newer map very well could have been developed, just not necessarily adopted by the town.
Did you have to adopt this, Bob? Do you remember?
It was part of the, it's, it's supposed to be part of the zoning regulations.
Okay.
So that was just kind of my. Cur- just curious as whether or not that happens automatically or if new maps are produced.
Well, wouldn't the new maps be sent to us if they were produced?
Yeah, that's my question.
I would assume.
Do we really think the deer went somewhere else?
Well, in, in, in that case, the deer could have gone somewhere else because he logged it. So if he took out the majority of the evergreens, then the deer would go somewhere else.
Well, there's a mic drop. Yep.
I, I think that when it comes to that, the Act two fifty is going to have a lot to say.
Oh, they'll have a lot to say. And you have to get a sign off on, all, all the agencies have to sign off on it.
On that kind of logging?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, that kind of logging and the, just any sort of development within those districts. Act two fifty, they have a whole criteria. They look at all of this criteria. You need a letter from this agency, you need a letter from this agency, this agency before we'll even entertain signing off on a permit.
See, Rist Hill is all under Act two fifty and that's the issue with the last one being approved, so.
And pretty quickly, um, pretty quickly they approved it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, those approvals came in, uh, surprisingly fast. That's good. Um, okay. Other comments or questions on this one?
So where do we stand? We're going to look into, zoom in on this a little more carefully and.
Zoom in a little deeper on that and I will, um, I will talk with the lady at Act two fifty as well to see if she's received a copy of that because initially he was going to her first. And he told me on the phone, just within the last couple of weeks, the reason I went to you first was I want to know what the issues are there before I start paying the fees to Act two fifty to get their approval, so.
And is the logging that's being done in this area also being, being, being done in conformity with this wildlife?
I have no idea.
So.
I don't know.
Maybe that's worth asking too.
Well, that's, it's, we don't control people going and logging their property. So if it was under Act two fifty and Peter had it logged up, being the owner of the property, then he should have gotten ahold of Act two fifty and said, is this okay or not? Now, I do know that some loggers will do that as well, but not all.
Right.
So if you're gonna talk to the Act two fifty resources, maybe that's something to fly as well.
It's one of those where it's too little, too late.
Trees are gone.
Yeah.
But now we've got meadows.
There goes your deer wintering.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so more to come on that. You'll keep us posted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number seven, um, which is continuing the discussion about updating the town highway ordinance. We're just gonna keep talking about this for as long as makes sense. Um, Jane has reached out to the Vermont one hundred people.
Not the one hundred.
Jane, tell us.
That's my idea.
Manas Gutney and Manas Guti Overland.
Stacy's gonna reach out to the Vermont one hundred people and.
G M H A.
G M H A.
And we do have our final draft, so I'll, I'll do that. I had forgotten.
Yeah, I need to do it.
We finalized that draft, so.
V T one hundred and G M H A. Jane, thank you for drafting that. And I am gonna be doing vast. And you've given me the contact information for vast, I believe, and rats. Does anyone know who I should contact for Reading all-terrain sportsman?
Uh. Mike. He works in the down office in Plymouth. It's Mike Holm, I think.
What is it?
Holm. I gave you that name too.
Okay.
Give me a list of things I have.
Who do you work?
Who's working for who here?
I'm not writing anything down here. Wasn't on my list.
Okay.
Work, homework.
He is, he has, when the ice storm went through, he rounded up a group of forty people. And they went out and did a lot of work on the class four roads from Brown Schoolhouse area northwest down into South Woodstock and down into Bridgewater in that area where the Mount Moses Trails and Walker Trail and, uh, some of those, uh, roads go. Cleared them out so people could get through. And he told me how many trees it cut out. I thought it was a big number.
I'm sure.
I have, I have not been through there. I don't know if you've gone through there or not, Ray, but I haven't been through there because I'm not sure that, uh, other than opening up the passageway, maybe twelve or fifteen feet wide. I'm not sure how much other work they did, but. They were there for two or three weekends doing that.
It was a mess, big mess.
Do you want me to send this to you? Thirty-five, something?
Oh, yes, please. Jane apparently has all the information underneath her, the rats. Um, so happy to continue taking feedback on this now. If there's anything new that anyone wants to say who is in attendance tonight, I don't think we have anyone on our thing. Anyone is also welcome to send us an email at.
PC, Reading V T dot net.
If, um, that's ever helpful and someone wants to just write in and give an opinion.
Well, that's up, that's up to say.
I'm thinking maybe you do. Well, we've, we've heard from Ray before, right? You're welcome to keep talking. Do you want to say anything, Ray, first?
Uh, I mean, you know, again, I'm, I'm just in favor of having two classifications of class four roads. One that is permanently occupied by resident versus one that's just a trail through the woods.
I don't know if there's a mechanism for that, but that's a perfect example of something Mark could help us with. Like right now, there are class four roads under, um, state highways.
Regulations for class four roads.
Could Reading, could we have it be something else? I don't know. That's a good question.
Well, if I can answer a little bit, something to put Ray to saying there. You all know the business side man. I'm in forest management and cleaning up after logging operations. Uh, I was in Woodstock doing a job and I got contacted by Vermont. Not able to call themselves. Vermont Environmental Protection Agency for a job I was working on because it dealt with weapons. Were they talking about office?
I mean, it was fine.
It was perfectly fine.
Yeah, it was, no issue.
But then I got asked some questions about class four roads, trails, some of those kinds of things. And, uh, a fellow I spoke to, he's, he's up in the Montpelier office. We have a new environmental officer who is now down here, who surfaces this district. He's a brand new guy.
Do you know who it is?
I have his name, so I can give that to you.
I would love that because that has been vacant for a long time.
And a question I asked him was that Rich Trail is a trail, but yet the town calls it class four road. And he was saying to me, under Vermont statutes, if it's named as a trail, every map I've looked at says it is a trail, then it is referred to as a trail. And it's not for, for my deals. But yet the town has some things that they, you know, work through.
They have, they have some jurisdiction overlap.
Jurisdiction on things. But I have a whole bunch of stuff here. I'm gonna leave it to you. I'm not gonna read all through it.
You know how you go to Dr. Google? Now we go to Miss Chat G P.
It's all, it's all very interesting. But then I asked the question, I said, well, Rich Trail cuts through the Arthur Davis Wildlife Management Area. And everything I've read says motor vehicles are not allowed in there unless there's motor vehicles. And that cuts right through, comes right through our property and then.
Comes on the other side.
Comes, comes down through there. And, and he says it's a really gray line between, uh, towns and state on a wildlife management area. And then I carried it a little further and I said, how about runoff? We got talking about lines too, but runoff, we got talking about the first time. I said, how about runoff? And he says, well, if it's runoff that goes into non, into non-acquired supporting strains, the state has no jurisdiction. But there is runoff that comes off of Rich Trail that goes directly into Bailey's Brook. And the state of Vermont has one hundred percent jurisdiction on that, not the town because it falls underneath the, uh, waterman, water, true water management something, which is federal government as well as state. It has wildlife in it and if it can be impacted by oil or things like that that comes off of four by fours that are using it, the state can shut the road down.
But, but the, but towns also got a lot of jurisdiction.
Towns also got jurisdictions and it's, it's not to say, and I keep on saying it, I preface this with over, over, and over here. I do not want to shut the road down so Ray can't ride a forest through there or that an ATV can't go through there or someone on a mountain bike that's electric can go.
Or not.
Or not. They're not the issue. The issue is the big four by fours that go through. An ATV weighs two thousand pounds, maybe twenty-five hundred pounds. A, an electric mountain bike, which I have one myself, you know, weighs fifty, fifty-seven pounds. And they, they do not tear up the roads. They don't spin their tires, you know, when going through that stuff. We're riding very carefully so we don't fall off and, and you're using minimal power to your bike so you're not spinning your wheels. ATVs, when they're going through, they're going slow. You know, we have, we've had a few go through. They're not the ones that caused the damage. I'll say now that a certain individual has left town, or we all know who that individual is. Well, we haven't had this traffic anymore. And so that's all been, that's all been, that have been very much reduced.
And it's dry too.
And, and, and it's very dry. But the same issue still, still comes to mind is when it is uh, mud season or winter or after mud season is over and the town has been very gracious in saying that, yeah, if you wanna close the road down, you can call us. You can put a chain across it. You can call us.
Can't lock it though, ever?
What's that?
Can't ever lock it? Can't have a locked chain or a locked key?
Oh, no, not locked. It's just, it's just saying, uh, the road's closed. And I've had a number of people who've come up, when I have shut it down because of heavy rains and everything else. And every one of them has been uh, very understanding and saying, no, we will not go down the road. And oh, by the way, all the roads in New Hampshire are closed. That's why we're over here.
So is it your opinion, Jeffrey, that um, your discussion, through your discussion with this new AP, EPA guy?
Yeah.
That he?
Is he EPA or ANR?
He is saying that.
Environment.
No, you said EPA, right?
Yeah, I think it's environmental.
He's the, he's the Environmental Protection uh,
Federal or state?
Officer for our district.
Which would be state.
And he answers to Montpelier. As a guy that was here before, he's known.
I don't know if Vermont has a specific EPA.
Yeah.
The station was questioning guys.
Uh, so my, my, it, it's your opinion through your discussion with him that he believes and you believe that the state has jurisdiction over this? Because it has runoff into Bailey's Brook?
If it has runoff, it goes down into Bailey's Brook and is going to affect uh, fish, which do live in the Brook, then the state has jurisdiction.
So if that were the case, then that would supersede anything the town put in place? And then the state would have to act on that?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, so I, as a property owner with that trail running through your property, then you may wanna contact that individual and get something in writing that gives you jurisdiction over that road?
And I asked Mr. Dave GPT about Vermont's statistics. And again, it really, it, the, the statutes are there, but it does throw it back to the town.
Yeah, that's how I understand it.
As well, because it's.
The town.
The town has jurisdiction.
Right.
The town can restrict, in other words, the town can turn around the select board. It specifically says the select board has the authority to say there's weight limits of.
Or seasonal.
For, or seasonal, but there's, they can be seasonal or they can flatly turn around and say, there's weight limits that no vehicle over fifteen hundred pounds is allowed on this road.
So I would think, I would think if the state were concerned about runoff going into Bailey's Brook.
Yeah.
They would take action with the select board to make changes.
Well, I, and, and I, you know, I asked, asked the questions and I said, well, it seems like you're doing a lot of your own due diligence, talking to the select board, talking to different people in the town with your concerns about the, the erosion that is going on in it. And, and that, that there are, you know, there are little brooks that run from Rich Trail down to Bailey's uh, Bailey's Stream because I've walked them and, you know, water does runoff down there. So at different times of the year, there's normal ponds up there that, that water is going down to, you know, Bailey's, Bailey's Mills stream.
And that's a concern.
It's hard enough that it is, it is supporting not just sableanders, but it's frogs, it's fish and, you know, other things. And that all falls underneath the jurisdiction of the state of Vermont. Underneath the, the, the Clean Water Act in protecting clean water in the state of Vermont.
If it's an intermittent stream though, in the state of Vermont, it's. If it's an intermittent stream, in other words, it dries up in the summertime, and I'm not talking about this summer, but.
Right.
If it dries up in, in every summer, then it's totally under the control of the town, I would say.
Yes, that's.
That's, that's, that's yes and no. Cause I, I asked the same question. Our, our place, we renamed it Winterborne Farm. And I said to him, do you know what Winterborne means? And he says, I think I do. It's a stream that is born in the wintertime and then in the late summer and late spring and summer, it disappears.
Right, which is what you were saying, saying then.
Yet at the same time, if that winterborne stream flows down to Brooklyn, that, that is transmitting or flowing contaminants that will flow into the stream, whether it dries up or not, because it is the stream which you're considering where the, where it is that is always supporting.
Yeah, but perhaps maybe we should get, get Ryan, right? His first name is Ryan, to maybe come and talk to us because it's interpreting the statutes very differently because it does say the jurisdiction is very involved with the town. Um, and the town makes decisions, but. One question we had is, is Rich Trail a trail or is it a class four highway?
I can check that out.
That's my, that's one of my questions.
My understanding is it's a class four.
Every map that looks at it is referred to as Rich Trail. It's not referred to as.
I don't know that its name makes it, it has legal significance, right?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that's simply the name of the class four road.
Okay, that's what, that was my question.
To the H U O's investigation that we did, that's always been a class four road.
And, and in order to make it a trail, there is a process the select board has to go through. Either downgrade it to a trail or upgrade it to class four to a class three or do anything with a change of class. There is this specific process we have to go through.
It can either go up or down, you know?
Is that like what happened with Weld Cemetery? Was that downgrading to a trail from a class four?
It's, I believe that Weld Cemetery from just beyond New Hall Farm down to Brown Schoolhouse is a class four.
Sorry, you can walk that?
For what?
For vehicles? I thought it got changed to?
You can't get through there with a vehicle about two tenths of a mile. Down from New Hall's down to the Sharp Corner, which is still Weld Cemetery, but you can get to there with a vehicle. So in fact, they're doing, have been doing heavy, heavy logging out in there all winter. They've been going up in there with eighteen wheelers with a trailer behind them. And not an eighteen wheeler, twelve wheeler log truck with a trailer behind it.
Interesting. Well, it would be really great to have that class four inventory. Um, so this is a really complex area. I have to say, I can imagine there's all sorts of room for interpretation. If we really wanted to dig into it, if that's what we really wanna do, I think that is probably beyond the scope of this group on our own without, say, an outside advisor like through a Mark Ram.
Well, you know, but from the, the bulletin that came out, people were asking the question is, okay, it's a class four road. It's maintained not by the town, it's maintained by landowner, I mean.
Or anyone else is in the situation.
Or anybody else. And then it's, well, I've got a barn on that class four road, but in the wintertime, uh, I'm supposed to call the town to snow blow it out so I can get up to my barn? That makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. But people are asking those questions of saying, they have class fours on their road, would structure it on them? And for the town, they're saying you can only use certain types of stuff on it. And, you know, that's, that's ridiculous too. You know, it's, it's a railway for the town, but it's a road that gets to outbuildings of mine.
Well, I think that's the point. Yeah, that's the point Ray brought up.
And, and so, you know, I think it's ridiculous that anybody have to call the town and say, can I uh, can I put rattle down or whatever that go up to my, my barns or whatever else? I'm maintaining it and everything else. And then likewise, I think I, I talked to your sub-paw or somebody else on it. Uh, last year I put in water parks from our barn during the winter. Yep, steep and deep. I'll tell you, all the horseback riders absolutely loved them. The jeepers didn't like them because they blocked them down. But it's the first time that road didn't wash out because of that.
And water parks aren't included.
You know?
So it's a good place for.
I have, I have more than I'd like to do up there, but, you know, my season's still going, so I haven't gotten up there yet.
I would just like to add is that, um, I mean, I'm glad that there's less four-wheel drives, but it's been sad to see that, that trail, and perhaps there's other trails that are in the same situation in the town, is that a certain segment of the population has made this road so, so inaccessible that other groups that have interest in using it, like this year, Overland bikes did not use the trail. GMH did not use the trail on their rides.
Yeah, I can't bike up it anymore. Maybe people more robust than I am can.
And so, so it's, it's a question of, like, one of the people still enjoys it, but other, now no longer have access or usability of it because of that one group that has.
And to be fair, Hurricane Irene was a game changer.
Huge.
That's, that's what really brought it down to the ledge in a lot of that section.
I know.
So there's, there's a.
Happened to ours.
Yes, and it's a yes and situation.
Yes, and, yeah.
But really what we're trying to do is solicit feedback. So this is great. Uh, and.
So we'll leave this, Shannon, um, we'll email this. You do not have to retweet anything like it.
I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples right now. The man I spoke to, his name is Dan Morris. He was, he was the environmental officer for the winter area. He's been now reassigned to Montpelier. And uh, although I, uh, Dan Morris has, has been reassigned here. The fellow who was here was Ryan McCall. So Ryan McCall is now up in Montpelier and Dan Morris is the new environmental officer for all of winter.
Okay, thank you.
For income.
And I thought it was a really interesting conversation with him, just kind of picking his brain and asking things, you know, about ponds and, and uh, streams. I found it interesting on, on ponds, on uh, wood disินments, where the, where the state gets involved in the science of a pond. Uh, he says, don't quote me on it, but it's about five acres. And by anything below that, you can almost do anything you want. Unless it has a stream that feeds into it that uh, supports aquatic life, then you can't.
So protection's over there.
It's five hundred thousand cubic feet.
Five hundred thousand cubic feet?
Five hundred thousand cubic feet of water, then the state takes over.
Ah, so this is, so it's pretty fast moving?
Five hundred thousand cubic feet. What does that represent?
The volume of water.
Volume of water.
No, no, I, I know it's volume of water, but I mean, uh, yeah, you can say that's an acre. This is foot wide and two thousand feet deep. But I mean, is it, is it something that's as big as this room?
Or you, you take the length and the width and the average depth.
And the average depth.
So the stream that's going through Redding or Veltville now, would that be considered falling into that category?
What's that?
The, the, like the stream that goes next to Hall Art, you know, the black, isn't that?
No, it's not this, it's not a stream. It's a pond.
A pond.
A pond.
It's a pond.
Oh, it's a pond. Okay.
Something that's contained.
Contained, got it. Okay, okay.
A good example, I maintain it over Brownsville. Uh, I got involved there two years ago or so.
Doesn't matter.
And I would say, Bob is the biggest pond I've ever seen. I maintain, I maintain mowing the dam, which is thirty feet tall on one side and, you know, up this high on the other side. And uh, in nineteen forty, the owner of the property brought in two D nine bulldozers and they dug a pond, huge pond, pond, it's a lake, it's got an island in the middle of it.
It does.
And uh, it's twenty-six feet deep.
I would like a pond with an island personally, but it won't last.
We all.
All right, um, unless there is a lot more to say on this topic, maybe we, it has run its course for this evening. We will continue. If you know of anyone who you think is a stakeholder in this conversation or has great ideas and feedback for the class four road issue or the town highway ordinance, um, we are looking for input. Thank you, Jeffrey. Um, and, and to be clear, there is no predetermined anything. Maybe the recommendation is, wow, this is really complex. Let's do nothing. Um, I feel like every time I've gotten feedback, it's, don't give away anything to private property owners. Um, don't close it off to any constituency. So none of those things are, are being proposed. It's really just looking for information. Uh, so thank you for sharing your stories.
Just, just one last thing.
Yeah.
I've been doing my homework, so I got a name and number for you. Uh, on the rats and the snowmobiles.
Yeah.
And.
Potables.
And I just read through those regulations while Jeff was talking. I had to listen to him too. But in looking at the map, I'm sure that that's the latest map in that entire.
This one?
Yeah, and that entire parcel that's going to be subdivided off is in the significant well loud. So it is, it is yours. I give it to you.
Both sides. Inform the landowner. You would have to apply through whatever channels that has.
I will talk to him and I will talk to the faculty, but it's very, very plain now in looking at that map that it's yours to decide.
Awesome. Looking forward.
I'm, I'm sure you are. Jane, it's gonna come in your plate very quick.
Planning.
Give me my map.
Submissions, I think, are planning. Um, great. Uh, all right, let's move off of that item to be continued. Um, next meeting is supposed to be this fall or on Wednesdays to accommodate my schedule. Thank you very much. Um, next one is supposed to be Wednesday, October first.
Get it to work?
Yes.
Yeah.
A quick question, Bob. Is there, if we were to, or wanted to change to Wednesday's ongoing, is that an issue? Do we have to get an approval or we just?
You.
Okay.
Just, just let Astronomical put it in the informer.
Okay.
And next year we'll update it.
Okay.
Cuz you usually have a conflict on the Monday, but it's, it's really helpful to have you come as a zoning administrator to give us updates and answer questions and stuff when you're available, if Wednesdays work better.
Well, Wednesdays are a lot better. Yeah, I like Wednesdays too.
It also keeps us from conflicting with the school board meetings as well, so, which is nice.
And there are a lot of Monday holidays, which depends on.
So Shannon, I ask you this, since the fall festival's before.
Yes.
You feel like we can give up time for that?
I, I think so. I think it's, it's something.
It should be done on Thursday.
Yeah, I feel like it's.
All right, the first is fine.
Okay, so next meeting, Wednesday, October first. I will keep trying to remember to put it in the front porch forum. It's not a requirement, but I think people do see it and maybe it's helpful.
Good.
As of right now, I have it in the minutes that we are shifting the meetings. I would say that as of December, if we want to permanently move it, then going forward, I wouldn't call it a move. I would just put it as our next meeting, but for, through the end of the year, I have it as a noted movement for the normal calendar.
I think that makes sense. And I like the Wednesdays too. I think coming, blasting off the weekend into Monday night is not always a pain in the.
So when you put it in the front porch forum, are you gonna attach the agenda to it?
You know, I don't because uh, uh, I don't.
It's available.
It's like one more step. It's like one more area for entry.
If you just, do you say if you wanna see what will be discussed, go to?
I do.
Okay.
So I say the agenda and the link is on the town clerk's website. I feel like the more places I copy it, the more chances there are for.
Right.
I'd rather have it be in one official location.
Okay.
I don't know if you have Esther's email, but if not, send me the notification. You're gonna do it or give it to her in writing. I'm gonna hold my teller.
Does she listen to you?
Is that your, your idea or the planning commission's? So it should come from you that it's gonna be the first Wednesday. But I'll tell her to get it in the next informer.
Okay, um, hold on. I think I have her email, but if I don't, I will sort it with Melissa. I think I have her email, but if I don't, I will sort it with Calista. So let's keep going this fall with the Wednesdays and have it be kind of a trial for after December. We, we agreed on Wednesdays up till December and I'm more comfortable with it if everybody else is and it seems to work. If Rome seems to work, maybe this will be the new, the new thing. Okay. Any other business? Other comments, thoughts, hopes, dreams?
I was just gonna comment.
Yeah, summer went too fast.
I was just gonna announce that the Redding Fall Festival is occurring this, upcoming October fourth from eleven to three. And we hope that the entire community is able to come out and join us. We'll have food trucks, our bike parade, face painting, carnival games.
Music?
Music. Music. Thank you. Yeah, anything else I'm forgetting?
And it's sort of a little bit of a showcase for some local organizations, yeah.
Yeah, volunteer activities will be out to talking to the community, getting the word out. Maybe some mural painting, events at the library. Watch front porch forum for news to follow.
Perfect, thank you for all the hard work that I know you both are putting in on it.
We're excited, it's gonna be fun.
It's gonna be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other new business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.